Are we ready? Okay, great. I'm going to call to order the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission Study Session. Next, first item will be Item 1, UP 20-06 Heritage North Ground Floor Residential, along with UP 20-08 Heritage North Hotel and Z 20 Heritage North. Ashley.
Thank you Chairman and Commission Members. Hopefully you can see my screen. This item is three cases tonight we're going to hear all together. Z 2002, UP 2006, and UP 2008 for the Heritage North site. The property is located in our Heritage District. As you can see on this vicinity map, it's off of Gilbert Road, south of Juniper, and with Ash on the west side of the property. You can also see the power line trail is to the south side of the property with the developed part of Heritage, the Heritage District, south of that power line trail. As an overview, this is a 10.8 acre parcel. The zoning on it is currently HVC with a PAD. It's part of the La Vida Serena PAD. And what the applicant is seeking is to remove this piece of property from that PAD and create the new Heritage North PAD with its own deviations. So with their PAD overlay, they're looking at this time to increase the maximum building heights for four of the buildings and to decrease the minimum building heights for two of the buildings, which I'll show you on some subsequent slides. In addition to that, they've got two use permits that we're processing. The first one being to allow ground floor residential within HVC, and then a second one to allow a hotel in the Heritage Village Center. Also under review is a design review application that will be reviewed by the redevelopment commission, and then administrative use permit to look at a shared parking scenario based on the unique uses on the site. And so there's a total of five applications total. Only three of these will be heard by the planning commission. So looking at the zoning map, you can see the overall site as I showed on the aerial picture. But delving into it a little bit deeper, they are requesting, as I mentioned previously, some modifications. It's important to note that they are far exceeding the minimum floor area required in HVC of 25%. So this is a pretty dense project, hoping that it'll bring a lot of excitement and activity to our downtown. With that, they're requesting that the minimum building heights be modified for two of the buildings, which I'll show on the next slide. Minimum building heights in HVC are 35 feet and two stories. In this case, they're proposing that that minimum be reduced to 20 feet and one story. And then they're also proposing some modifications to the maximum building heights in HVC. You can currently go up to 55, 55 feet in height, and that should say five stories. And they are looking to modify that to go to 76 feet and six stories. In addition, as staff conducted our review of the design review, we identified a couple of other areas that they may need to request deviations for that aren't part of the current request, but I wanted to point those out as we go through. One of those being the build two line. Within HVC, buildings must be within 10 feet of the property line. And I'll show you on the next slide one location that they may need to request a deviation to that. And then also, there's a provision for building transparency in storefronts where 75% of the ground floor area shall consist of windows, and that must be located between two and eight feet. So as we reviewed the multifamily, it was unclear whether or not they could meet this provision, or whether or not it makes sense for them to have, especially in that multifamily, 75% of that with transparent windows. So those may be some deviations that are worked in that I just wanted to mention today. So on the development plan, you can see, let me get my laser turned on. You can see the full site. So this portion of the site up here is the multifamily. So ground floor multifamily would be located along these portions. This is the hotel site. This is a retail restaurant site, retail restaurant site. This would be the parking garage, and then office and retail within this building and this building here. There's a parking garage here located at the center of the multifamily as well that would serve that multifamily component. And then when we talk about the deviation requests that the applicant has made, I want to just point out where those buildings are located that would be impacted by the deviations. So this building right here, the multifamily, they're requesting an additional story and two feet in height. The boutique hotel, again, would be requesting an additional story be allowed. This building here along Gilbert Road is one that they're requesting a reduction in height. And then this building here is another one that they're requesting a reduction in height on. Staff has indicated to the applicant that we would like to see the building along Gilbert Road to look a little bit taller to preserve that street appearance along Gilbert Road. And so we've asked them to go back and see if they could redesign this building so that maybe we would be comfortable with one story if it looked a little bit taller. So we're still working with the applicant on what that might look like. Staff is a little bit more comfortable with a reduction in height on this building here just given its location next to this commons open space that's here in the center. The parking garage, they're looking at going up to 60 feet and six stories. And then the tallest building being this building here along the power line trail would be a total of 75 feet and five stories. And so just for some context, I wanted to show you what the existing Heritage District looks like in some of those buildings. So our tallest building in the Heritage District right now is the University Building. It's built at a total of 68 feet, eight inches. And so not much shorter than what's being proposed. Their PAD did approve a maximum height of 85 feet, but they ultimately constructed it at just the 68 feet. We know that the water tower is 123 feet, and we're always conscious of preserving the views of the water tower. And so we've also, as part of this, asked the applicant to provide us some perspectives that might show what the view corridor looks like still towards the water tower. And then this image here up in the right-hand corner is the applicant's rendering of that very tall building. And so you can see that, I think it really does fit in well with the area, but of course we're seeking commission feedback on that deviation request. In terms of the use permits, these are pretty straightforward. The first one, UP 2006, again, is just to allow the ground floor retail in HVC. There is a total of just under 75,000 square feet of residential on the ground floor. There's approximately 313 residential units total, so not just on the ground floor, of course, but in the total building. And then UP 2008 is to allow that hotel in HVC. It's proposed at 150 rooms. That's consistent with the development agreement that we've entered into with this developer on the property. And so just to show where those are located again, I know I pointed it out on the previous development plan, but the multifamily highlighted here in red, and then the hotel here highlighted in blue. So those two do need use permits to allow those uses. Tonight, staff is seeking input from the commission on the height increase requests on those four buildings. Your thoughts on the decreased building, decreased height for buildings four and six? And then if you've got any thoughts on those use permit requests as we move forward with this? Happy to answer any questions that you have, and I believe the applicant is on the line as well to hear your feedback.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. We'll do the same thing that we did last month for the commissioners. If you want to speak out, if you could just please announce who you are first, and then go ahead. So right now, does anybody in the commission have any comments or questions for staff?
Yeah, Chairman, this is Dave Caveney. I've got just a couple of questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so Ashley, you mentioned the ground floor residential. Is there anything, any other use above the residential, or is it residential from ground to top of building?
Yeah, so that building is residential there. I mean, of course, there are some amenity areas in there for the residence. So I think this corner right here, if you can see where I'm pointing, is Fitness Center, if I'm remembering correctly from those floor plans, and then the parking garage. But it is, it is a residential building.
Okay, so the mixed use does not extend to vertical integration. It's all a horizontal integrated mixed use development, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and then on the, on the multifamily component there, is there going to be any type of fencing or separation from the commercial, or is it, is it pretty much a free-flow, open access?
Yeah, it's really free-flow. Everything's intended to really interact synergistically, I guess. You know, there's landscaping, of course, to shield, and the hotel here has a pool out here, and so there's a fence there kind of separating that use from the multifamily. But it's really, it's really intended to integrate and interact with one another.
Okay. And it looks like, if I can tell from the plan, that all of the residential users will be asked to park in that, in that one garage in the northwest corner of the property, probably, right? There isn't a lot of street parking.
Correct.
Okay. Other than, I see you've got the parallel stalls along that street there probably for guests. Now, I know that this particular lot currently gets a lot of overflow parking from the nightlife that has been created there in the Heritage District. Have we looked at, or has this developer provided much parking beyond the required demand?
That is an excellent question. One of the applications that we're reviewing concurrently with this is actually a parking reduction based on shared uses. And so we've completed our first review and sent back a lot of questions for more information and clarification to better understand how they think that this site is going to function. So that is something that we're looking very closely at.
Okay, good. That's all my questions. I'll have feedback later, but that's, those are the only questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Jan Simon. I have a question. Ashley, is the multifamily apartment, or is it condo for sale type unit?
That's a great question. I, I want to say that I'm recalling that they are for rent, but I will clarify that and have a, have a better answer for you next time, because I, I think that I know the answer, but I'm not 100%.
I appreciate that. I just feel like we're, we're putting a lot of apartment complexes in, but from a multifamily condo type situation, we don't have any product like that in Gilbert that I'm aware of, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Commissioner Nathan Macken.
Go ahead, Commissioner Macken.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, give some input as to this project. I think, I think we, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer. I think you give them as much flexibility as possible. It's a much higher and better use than the current, current development. And given the fact that as long as it is, flows with the current Heritage District and doesn't detract from, from that usage, I think it's, it's a wonderful compliment to, to that district. So I'm all for giving them as much flexibility as they might need. I can see that they know what they're doing, so allowing them to, to be able to, you know, determine how they're, how to best develop it according to the market, I think is, is wise on our part. So that's, that's my two cents.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, I'll give a little, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Phil. Is that you, Phil, or Jan?
Thank you. Phil Alabrandi, to echo Commissioner Caveney's comments, I'm concerned about the parking, so I'd be very interested to see how the final, their answers is on that. Thank you.
And Chairman Dave Caveney, just a few other feedback points. So I think to some of the questions that Ashley asks specifically, I think regarding the height adjustment for the tall building on the south, I think it fits fine given that that is, is it a canal, or whatever that actually, I think it is a canal right there. So it kind of makes sense. The only thing that I'm thinking it may do from a feel, look and feel perspective is it, it may tend to, to create a feeling of cutting this development off from the energy of the existing experience or environment to the south, rather than capping it, it's kind of acting as a blockage between that flow visually. So that's the only thing I would think. To me, it would kind of make sense to drop this maybe on the northwest corner or northeast corner and create that boundary to what is a thriving experience down there. So just, just a thought there. And then as far as the shorter building along Gilbert Road where we're reducing the height, I definitely can appreciate having that streetscape, high building elevation type experience. But I do also think there's value in creating view windows into a taller development behind. So as you're going down Gilbert Road, I think it's great to have that, that height, but, but to be able to then get a glimpse of what's beyond, I think can draw people in. So I don't mind it. I think that would work great. And then as far as the use permits, I think this is a perfect example, or good example, of, of a horizontally mixed-use development, which, you know, we've seen some efforts at this in the past. I think this, this truly lends, especially not having the barriers between them, really integrating them on the same lot. I think if it's going to make sense, this is it. And so I support that use permit for both the hotel. The one thing I would, I would look at, and I don't see how the hotel would park itself unless it's all valet to the garage, and then you've got to segregate it from the residential assigned stalls. But that would be a little bit of a concern as to where we're going to park that hotel. But I, but I think those uses, as far as the UP part of this case, are fine for me. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
This is Jan Simon. I'll, I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Caveney just said. I mean, thinking about the height there on the south by the canal, I would, I would fear, you know, potential walling off of the Heritage District to the stand, so I'd love to see what that flow looks like as far as from one side to the other, obviously, you know, where that goes. And then just concern on parking. I mean, it's a big thing, just kind of looking at that, where we already sit with parking in that district, adding a large hotel like that, if you've got the mixed use, or to me, the multifamily using the garage, just kind of understanding that. And I'd love to know, you know, how they, how they plan to, to address that situation. But from a height perspective, to your question, you know, it doesn't seem like we're, we're in much variance from what the University Building already is, so I would be fine with, with the height variances requested from the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I do have a couple of questions for you, Ashley. One, the height reduction request. Is there a minimum standard in this area that they're supposed to maintain? Is that why they're asking for a reduction? Because usually you just see, you know, for the other buildings, asking for a, you know, height increase. I just, I haven't seen a, a reduction. What's, what's causing that?
Yeah, Chairman, in Heritage, in Heritage Village Center, there is a minimum height requirement of 35 feet and two stories for new buildings. And so those two buildings, just being the one story and roughly 20, 25 feet, don't meet that minimum height. So it's unique to HVC.
Okay, so in the code, they're, we're currently required to at least provide two stories minimum?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I have no problem with that, with that reduction. I think there's a couple of other, there is a few buildings in that area, I believe, that are one-story, but I think they make it up with the difference of height. So I, I think that's reasonable. Do want to kind of throw out the parking reduction, that's, that's a separate application that is being worked on, is that right?
That is correct. That's an administrative use permit.
Okay. The concern on that one is, that's a pretty busy area right now, and once this development happens there, it's going to bring a whole lot more people to the area. I live not too far from this, you know, pretty much walking distance to Heritage District. And, you know, before the whole coronavirus thing kicked in, that's a pretty busy area, especially on the weekends, and parking right now is, is pretty, pretty hard, even with the new parking structure there. So I would just throw some caution into how much of a reduction you allow. Personally, I don't, I, I wouldn't allow a reduction, but if it's done administratively, it sounds like we don't have a say on that. So I would just ask that you please be cautious about that. Regarding the height, so on the west side, there is a single-family neighborhood in there. Has there been any neighborhood reach-out to these, to the local, to the neighboring areas, or are they not that, at that point in this application to have neighborhood meetings yet?
Another great question, Chairman. They have held a neighborhood meeting, and there was, there was a handful of people that came, and feedback was pretty positive. It was open house style, and so I was only able to hear, you know, conversations kind of as I, as I wandered around the room. But it seemed like there was some pretty positive feedback, and we haven't heard anything directly to me anyway that it's been of concern.
Okay, so it's, it's safe to assume that the single-family to the west feel pretty okay of having a five-story building adjacent to them on the east?
Yeah, and, and, you know, as we move forward with, through the, through the process, we'll do the continuing notifications for the public hearings, and we'll seek input. But yeah, at this time, we haven't heard, we haven't heard concerns.
Okay, because usually with multifamily, as you know, I mean, you put a multifamily next to a single-family, the biggest concern is, you know, if you have a three, just a three-story building, people start kind of losing their minds and not wanting it there because they don't want people looking into their backyard. So if, if everything feels pretty comfortable, I think that's great. One more question, the hotel that's being proposed, is there a need for a hotel in this area?
Yeah, and the hotel was actually part of the, the RFP when we, when we sought a developer for this site. That was something that, that the town was interested in securing on this site, to have that, that boutique-style hotel to offer just another amenity to our downtown.
Okay, so the town feels confident that if a hotel is built here, that it's, it's going to be occupied?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, all in all, I, I think the project is great. It's definitely what the area needs, and that's a good spot for it. And just from the images that you've supplied so far, the 3D images, illustrations, I mean, it looks like a really nicely designed project, and it's, it's exciting to see. And, you know, hopefully this will continue going forward and, and get built. So, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Let's move along to Item 2, DR 20-09, Central Arizona Supply Potato Barn. Stephanie, please.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'll share. All right, so this is DR 2009. CAS stands for Central Arizona Supply, and it's a user wanting to go into the Potato Barn building that is located within the Gateway Character area. So this site is located along Williamsfield Road. Up here in the red laser pointer is Recker in Williamsfield. So this is to the west of the Cooley Station Village Center area, and just east of the railroad crossing along Williamsfield. So this is the Potato Barn building. It's been existing since the 1960s and has been vacant for a couple of years, and did used to be used as the Potato Barn Furniture Store in the past. So in 2017, a design review was approved for the site in a phase development, and the applicant is coming back to modify the phasing and update some elevation, so that is why it's coming back to you tonight to be looked at for some feedback. So this first approval had two additional buildings proposed, one at 10,000 square feet and one to the south at 14,000 square feet. And the Phase 1 was initially the Central Arizona Supply, which is a specialized plumbing service and sales company. We're going to occupy this site, and the future phases would have the Potato Barn site with the existing exterior building. And then I'll go to the master site plan that's part of this design review. So the layout is pretty much the same, there's just some parking modifications that have happened. The two buildings to the east that are not constructed yet are still proposed in the same positions in the same square footage, but the phasing has just been updated to show that the Potato Barn site will be the first phase, and it'll be adaptive reuse of the, the building, as well as the building to the south. Since the first review has gone through, the applicant has notified me that the exterior building is not able to be rehabilitated, so they will be taking this down and consolidating this building two and building three into just one building at 5,000 square feet. So the renderings that I'll be showing later are showing the new building, but the 2D elevations are showing the older first review. So I'll just make sure to note that as we go through. The site was also approved with an administrative use permit for a parking reduction due to the specialized use of the plumbing service company. So there is also an amendment to that administrative use permit to get updated just to reflect the new site layout and the shifts in the uses. For landscape plan, it's pretty consistent with what was approved, just some first review comments. There is a 50-foot natural gas line going along the Wade Drive alignment, so we just requested that any trees that were proposed or required in that section to just be shifted throughout the site so that we still meet our requirements for vegetation. For elevations, this is the 2D for the Potato Barn building, so they are going to be sandblasting that red that's seen on the existing Potato Barn and using this gray CMU, so that's the primary color. And they are trying to pay homage to that red that was used on the existing building on these posts. It's kind of hard to see on these elevations, so I'll just show the renderings. But this middle section here is what is the frontage that you'll see along Williamsfield Road. So this will be the main entrance into Central Arizona Supply, and they have a patio overhanging where these new proposed windows are, as well as this ramp that is existing. So they are covering that with vegetation, and this is proposed to be an outdoor display area. This here is the east elevation, so this will be seen as you're heading west along Williamsfield Road. And then this outbuilding is going to be modified, so I'll show those elevations as well. So don't mind these here because these are going to be updated, but this is the west elevation of the site that will be seen as you're going eastbound on Williamsfield Road. On the colors and materials, this is what was proposed with the 2017 design review. So this is showing a lot of variation of colors and materials, so we are requesting your input tonight on the compatibility of this Potato Barn phase with the, what was already approved in the DR. So I also supplied the, what was approved in 2017 so that you can have those on hand to look at as well. So the renderings kind of show a different story than what those 2Ds. So you can see the canopies that are extending over the frontage of the building, so they are using that red as the post, and there are these existing pop-out columns on the building that they are proposing to paint red as well. And the floor plan will show that this section of the building is reserved for future retail spaces, and then this other half to the west will be for the Central Arizona Supply. And then this is just a close-up of the main entrance area with their proposed vegetation. And along the west side, they have updated that to add the columns to paint them red as well, and the window has been modified a bit. And then this elevation shows the updated 5,000-square-foot building. We're also requesting comments from you on the material chosen for this. It is corrugated metal. Our design guidelines request that corrugated metal not be used as a main primary building material. I'm just wanting to get your feedback on that. This is an ancillary building to the site, so we don't feel that it's necessarily a main building material, and it's also not going to be seen from the right-of-way too much. But we do want to acknowledge that the railroad is going along the south, and that will be a future commuter rail, and wanted to just note that this will be leading into the Cooley Station, commuter rail station. So to see what your comments are on if we want to maybe provide more articulation, or if there should be a mural or something to kind of brighten up this side of the elevation. And then these are the two approved buildings that were part of the 2017 design review case, so you can see that they used a lot case, so you can see that they used a lot of variation in the colors and materials from the palette. They do have some corrugated metal on one of the buildings, and it's primarily used kind of as the roof material. And then this is the floor plan, as I stated before, this will be additional retail, and then the Central Arizona Supply is going to occupy the west half of the Potato Barn, and then there'll be a breezeway that connects to the updated 5,000-square-foot building that will be their warehouse and service area. So just to bounce back to requested input for tonight, it's going to be colors and materials used on the Potato Barn building, and then the articulation of the rear service building, which is labeled as Building 2. So if you have any questions or comments, I can take those, and then I can bounce to whichever slide will be most helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Stephanie?
Chairman Dave Caveney, I've got a few questions and feedback. You okay? Can we go on?
Yep, go ahead.
So, yeah, Ashley, or I mean, sorry, Stephanie, I think this, given the usage, I, I, I don't mind how it looks. The elevations are pretty, pretty, they're dark and, and kind of monolithic. The, the red columns kind of punch it a little bit, and, and having the onings work. I think that, but given its use, I'm not sure that's a problem. I, I might want to see maybe just a little more contrast between the walls and the roof, but I think the, the real key here will be the landscaping, and, and it's evidence there in the rendering, that if they can green this up and it matures quickly, or we start with some decent maturity on the landscaping, it will soften this building and, and bring it out. So I'm, I'm okay with, with everything they've shown here. The rear building, though, I do think we ought to, we ought to push more towards a bit of a correlation, a better correlation with the existing building. And I realize it's a 1960s building, but I, I'm not, I'm not thinking that the corrugated metal is the right primary material. I think they could accent with that. But even though it is only viewable from the railroad side, I still think it should correlate just a little bit more. I, I think it can be a simple building, which it kind of is, and I think that's okay for what it, for what, for its purpose and where it's positioned, but I do think the material should be something more aligned with the main building. So those, those I think were the main things you were looking for, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Nathan Mackin.
Go ahead.
Yes, I, I, I think, I agree with Commissioner Caveney on, you know, the, the supply building. I think it could be better. The, the main, the main building, I don't, I don't take much deference with. I think it suits the, the kind of industrial retail market I, I believe they're, they're reaching for. It is a better use than, and a better looking than, than the current use, so I don't, I don't take much deference there. But if, if that support building, you know, maybe at least on the south and, and western walls that, that are exposed to the rail or to neighboring properties, that, that there's, there's something done there to, to improve the, the look, I think that would be a benefit to the project.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Chairman, this is Carl Bloomfield. This, this whole area used to be known as Higley, and it had kind of its own little downtown that since has been transformed dramatically as, as the improvements have gone on in the area. And this Potato Barn is kind of a leftover remnant of, of that era and of that timeframe, and I appreciate that they're keeping the building and paying homage to it to the extent that they can, and, and trying to refresh it and make it new. I guess my question for staff is, does it make sense? Because it feels like the previous application had a greater variety of materials that made it more fit in with what that area really was historically. But we are also pretty close to the Cooley Town Station and, and that Town Center and all of that's going on, and that is so new and so modern and, and has its own feel. I guess my question also is, are there requirements in the, the general plan or in the zoning categories for this area that would give more direction to the developer as to whether what they've got proposed here is okay, or is it really better to have the, the previous materials and variety of materials available on these buildings? I'm having a hard time trying to figure out what would be best in this area, if we try to pay, bring out more of the historical value of the area, or do we try to adapt this and bring it into the more modern feel of the Cooley Station area?
Sure, thank you, Carl. I'll answer that a little bit. So this site is not part of that Cooley Station kind of design guidelines that have been going through, but it is part of the Gateway Character area, so that kind of focuses more on a village center of a neo-traditional neighborhood. So it does pay homage to some of that in the previous DR with kind of more agrarian-style architecture that I think they're trying to pull from, and they're using brick as well, which just kind of pays a nod to the brick that's being used in Cooley Station. This site doesn't have any sort of design guidelines to follow other than the commercial design guidelines that we have for the town, because it is general commercial zoning district. So they proposed what they had in 2017, just based on their style of how they wanted to build the site.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that synopsis, and, and I'm all for people trying to figure out the best use of their property and, and all of that, but I just wanted to throw that out there because I think this was a significant historical area of the town. I mean, this Higley downtown, it, it was a significant part of the agrarian, the agricultural nod to, that the town has. And so I just throw it out there so that the applicant can hear it, and if they choose to, they can, you know, bring back some of those other materials if it, if it makes sense, but it really is going to be up to them, it sounds like. There's, there's no requirements. They're meeting all of the requirements, I guess, at this point.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Chairman?
Yes, who's this?
Don.
Commissioner Phil Alabrandi.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
So I've been around this building now for 18 years, and until today, I didn't realize there was a building up back. So my concern, and I really don't care so much about a light rail seeing corrugated building, my concern would be more as the phases get developed over time, that it ties in with the other two buildings of the future phases. I don't know if the corrugated building is, is for the look or to keep it inexpensive, but I guess I'm two-for-two with Commissioner Caveney tonight. I agree with his comment about upgrading that building, but literally, no one's going to see it other than maybe people parking on, down that side or the, the rail, and I'm not so concerned about the rail. And to, as a proud supporter of the Higley Achievement Foundation for Higley Unified District, Higley is not dead. We're still here.
All right. Any last comments or questions?
Chairman, Commissioner Simon?
Go ahead, Commissioner Simon.
Yeah, I just want to kind of throw my two cents behind Commissioner Alabrandi and Commissioner Caveney. I actually do like the main building. I like the look of it and the feel. I feel like the back building, to me, feels a little bit like a afterthought. And, and again, not, not sure if it's from a cost perspective or what they're looking for, but I'd like to see it tied in more with the look and feel of the front building. You know, I feel like if, if the vegetation was put correct...
John, we, we lost your mic.
Commissioner Bloomfield, can you say something just to make sure that we can hear other people? Can't hear anything? Okay.
Okay, I think we're back on. Commissioner Simon, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Can you please go back to what you, I, I think we lost a good portion of your statement, so if, if you wouldn't mind just going back to what you were saying again, please?
Yeah, I was just simply saying that I, I appreciate and like the, the look of the main building, what they've done. I, I like how they've put that together. I feel like the back building seems to me to be a little bit of an afterthought. And, you know, whether it was a cost efficiency situation or whatnot, I would like to see it tied more, in more with the look and feel of the front building. I was also saying, the vegetation, it looks from the rendering, the trees that they've got there, I think, would block most of the view from the light rail, so I wouldn't really be too concerned about that. However, I would like to see that building tie in a little bit better with the front building from a material perspective.
Okay, thank you. If we have nothing more to add, we'll move along. Stephanie, are you good with us?
Yeah, Carl Bloomfield had some additional comments when we lost the connection, so I don't know if he wanted to...
Okay. Commissioner Bloomfield, do you have some, something you want to?
Sure, I'll, I'll add additional comments. The additional comments were, were, it's not that I'm disappointed with how this looks. I like how it looks. It's just that with it being such a historical landmark for this area, it seemed to make sense to have it have more variety, more of the shtick, or whatever you want to call it, that it used to have with the, with the different variety of materials. And so I was just wanted, the only point of my comments were to indicate that it might have some historical value to do that, but at the same time, I like it. I, I think it'll, it's definitely an upgrade, and, and it feels good. It really looks nice, and, and it'll be a great addition to the, this area of the town, but just wanted to make sure that historic value of it was, was considered and addressed.
Okay, thank you. If we're good, now we'll move along to item three. Thank you, Stephanie. DR 20-58, Asero Val Vista, Vice Chair Bloomfield, I'm, I have a conflict on this one, and we'll need to hand it over to you, please.
Okay. All right. Sydney, go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Your notes? We don't see the presenter view.
And has it now switched to presenter?
No, it still shows us the, when you first opened the PowerPoint, and it has a gray box in the upper corner.
Perhaps start it from the beginning, if you press on that button on the upper scroll bar.
Or go to view.
And now we see your presenter notes, so you, in the display, if you can switch screens.
Okay, how about now?
That's perfect.
All right, thank you guys for standing by. The application before you tonight is a design review application, DR 20-58 for Asero Val Vista. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of the Melrose Street alignment in Court Street. It's approximately 14.88 gross acres and is presently vacant. The site was recently rezoned from regional commercial to multifamily medium earlier this year, and it's also located within Val Vista Medical Growth area, which we've seen a couple of projects here in the last few months. The requested input tonight is increasing pedestrian connectivity to Court Street and Melrose Street and general elevation feedback. The applicant has requested to submit construction documents at risk, and staff would support CDs at risk if the applicant is able to address all first review comments prior to the CD submission. The applicant is proposing a new 328-unit multifamily development with a density of approximately 22 dwelling units an acre. The project has a total of 13 proposed residential buildings, along with seven carriage unit buildings, which are a combination of residential and garage below. The residential buildings are located along Quartz and Melrose Street, and also internal to the site, with the carriage units being located on the eastern and northern perimeters of the site. The primary access for the development is provided off of Melrose Street, which is a plane corrector, collector. As part of this development, the applicant will be required to construct the half-street of Melrose and associated site improvements, going all the way to Val Vista, along with some improvements on Court Street. There's also a secondary access proposed on Court Street that is an exit-only. There are sidewalks proposed internally to the site, and also sidewalks proposed on Melrose and Court Streets along those improvements I talked about, but there's only one portion of the sidewalk that is proposed to connect from the internal portion of the development to Melrose Street on this area right here. As part of the first review comments, staff requested that additional pedestrian connections be provided from the site to Quartz and Melrose Street. We like to see pedestrian connectivity to streets in any manner as well, but also due to the location of this adjacent to commercial developments, and also the Campo Verde High School located to the west. Moving on to the landscape plan, the landscape plan generally meets requirements and exceeds the open space requirement. The proposed landscaping includes a robust pallet of trees, shrubs, ground covers, cacti, and accent plants. On this landscape plan, you can clearly see the two amenity areas being depicted. The primary amenity area is located just ahead of the primary entrance off of Melrose The primary amenity area is located just ahead of the primary entrance off of Melrose Street, and this is where the clubhouse building is here. They also have provided a second amenity area over here on the western portion of the site, and they have submitted a full amenities package. There are quite a few elevations, so I'm just going to try to quickly go through all of the elevations. The proposed buildings include a combination of one, two, and three stories with a maximum building height of 40 feet. The primary building material is stucco painted in a range of white and grays with a brick veneer and a gray tone is the primary accent material. As you can see here on the clubhouse, the style of the building is a contemporary and modern style, which you'll see throughout the proposed buildings. The garages are located throughout the site internally. During the first review, staff recommended that the applicant provide a variation of garage tour types to provide a greater distinction between those. This is something that we commonly request typically every four to six doors. Some suggestions were changing the colors, adding windows, something around that area. These are the residential carriage units that are located along the perimeter. For the residential buildings, I provided a key map down in the lower right-hand corner for your reference. So with the carriage units, there are seven total, and they're located on the northern and eastern perimeters of the site. The next four slides are going to be the residential buildings. So there are four different color combinations and three different types of residential buildings. So this is the first residential building, building one, with its color combination. There's only one proposed on the site that I've highlighted and read on the key map. This is the second residential building with the first color option for the residential building two. There's two. It's included on five buildings throughout the site highlighted below. This is also the same second residential building with a second color option. And this is the third residential building type with another color option, and there are two provided on the site. During the first review, staff recommended a couple of different general suggestions for the elevations, including providing a variation of window types and increasing the massing on the popouts on the side of the residential building elevations. The side residential elevations were a concern for staff. Increasing the use of brick veneer on the residential building elevations and consider adding the brick veneer to the accessory buildings. As you saw, it was included on the clubhouse, but not included on the carriage units or the garages. And then also consider the addition of an entry feature in front of the stairwells. You can have exposed stairwells, but we do prefer that those are concealed and well-integrated into the building. And as previously discussed, the primary building material, stucco and this range of colors and some brick veneer as part of first review comments, we also did suggest the possibility of adding another, an additional color scheme. They did provide a variation of how they use the colors on the buildings, as you previously saw, but due to the large site area, it was recommended to provide possibly a second color scheme option. And again, I'm just requesting input on pedestrian connectivity and general elevations feedback, and then any feedback would be appreciated since the applicant is pursuing CDs at risk, and I'm here for additional questions.
There we go. Sidney, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, do you have any comments for staff?
Vice Chair, this is Commissioner Simon.
Go ahead.
Sidney, the only thing that I've got, I mean, first, I'd love to see another color. I really do feel like it's very monotone. It's just, yes, they mix it up, but it's just, I don't know, it feels very bland to me. So I'd love to see another color somehow integrated in there. But my question for you is with regards to access to courts, they've got a gate there. Is there a pedestrian access to courts, or is the only pedestrian access out to Melrose?
Commissioner Simon, so there is actually no pedestrian gates proposed externally. So this is their wall plan they provided. So these pink circular features are where they have proposed gates. So from my knowledge, no pedestrian gates have been proposed at any of the entrances, even the one that has the connecting sidewalks. So that's something that we would like to see in addition to the sidewalks is that pedestrian gate to access.
Yeah, I think it'd be important to have pedestrian access there. I think if you don't, you're going to high school kids in that gate. So just my thoughts.
Thank you, Yon.
Yeah, Vice Chair Bloomfield, I'll chime in. This is Dave Caveney. So I, my first reaction was similar to Commissioner Simon's, that it seems a little monotone. But it is, it is very modern, and I kind of, as I have studied the elevations here, I don't mind it so much. I think with the right materials accenting it, you know, some, I think they've got some stone and so forth. I don't have it up here, but I think they could vary the texture of the building enough so that the colors don't become so plain or so monotone. So I don't mind it so much. I think it's okay, and I think they've articulated it enough with some of the little caps they've got on the towers and some of the other, the other vertical versus horizontal. So I think, I think there's enough interest to probably make it fly. So I think I'm okay with that. I kind of think it's interesting, these outdoor walkways, too. I wouldn't think for residential like this that you would typically want those, but I think they kind of add a bit of a modern, they add to the modernness, or how do you say it? Modernity of it? I don't know with what word I'm looking for there, but yeah, I think that looks pretty good. Kind of neat. But as far as the pedestrian walkways, I think they look fine. As long as you can get them out to those collector streets, I think you'll get the pedestrian and dog walking and other things that you need to suffice. So I think it looks good.
Thank you, Commissioner Caveney. Anybody else?
Vice Chair Bloomfield.
This is Commissioner Mackin.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add, I agree with Commissioner Simon. I think they can maybe use another color that isn't another shade of gray or white. But I do agree with Commissioner Caveney also that I think there's enough architectural interest. I agree with him also with the stairwells. I think it actually fits this particular project. But I do agree with a lot of the other staff recommendations. One of the points of, I guess, a problem that seems to me is the garages, that they look a little light industrial in terms of, because of the modern scheme that they're going with, coupled with the lack of architectural diversity in those garages, these ones in particular, yes. I think it almost looks like just a light industrial warehouse unit there. And I think that more can be done there to improve the variety, the interest throughout the community, since those seem to be a fairly good part of what many people would see driving in and out of the community.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Sidney, I think, I think you've heard pretty common from everybody that we would like to see pedestrian access. It seems to make sense to have pedestrian access going to the west towards the high school. There's bound to be a few students who would appreciate that access being over there. They don't have access going to any other properties, even though it may make sense to have something going to the east and into that commercial area over there. But I wouldn't say that that's going to be a great addition to this development, but certainly to the sidewalks along the streets, it would be a welcome addition. Perhaps a variation in the garage doors. And I appreciated your comments about colors. Garage door styles could be updated or mixed between them. I agree. That's a little too monotone and not nearly as interesting as you would expect it would be. This will be a high-end development. I'm excited for it. I've always appreciated this development being here. I think it'll work well, but I would encourage perhaps a little more towards the colors. So you need anything else from us?
Oh, no, that's it. Thank you, Vice Chair Bloomfield.
Thank you. Relinquish back to the chair.
All right, thank you for taking that, Vice Chair. Let's see. We're at 6:10. We do have one more study session item, so let's just go through this one and then we'll get to the public hearing. So next one will be DR 20-25, Gray Star Active Adult Apartment Homes. Stephanie.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this next DR is DR 2025 for Gray Star Active Adult Apartment Homes. This site is located within the Cooley Station area, so same general area as the potato barn that you presented earlier. So southwest corner of Williamsfield Road and Recker. Further south, you'll get to Somerton Boulevard. There's an existing legacy charter school. So right across from that, this will be on the northwest corner of Future Somerton Boulevard and Recker Road. The site is 13.89 acres, and it is proposed to have a 201-unit, 55-plus age-restricted community. I also included the development plan of this corner, since there is a lot of development happening and kind of hard to see on an aerial map. But the green is the subject site tonight, as well as the Somerton Boulevard, which will extend past the site and connect up to Verde Drive. So this is included in this DR request, and Verde Drive is going to be constructed with the Verde at Cooley Station development that is located up here. And previously this year, Quintana at Verde, another apartment community, was approved on this site. The blue is the future transit station site, just to kind of orient where all of this is puzzle piecing together. So for requested input tonight, I'm looking for overall design, colors, and materials of the three different building types of this project. So there's a main building, a villas building, and a couple casitas buildings. So for the site plan, the main entrance is going to be located off of Recker Road, and this site is going to be gated based on the age-restricted community request. Staff has worked with the developer a lot trying to promote the the limited use of gates and fences in the Cooley Station area. We've tried to really promote connectivity throughout the entire Cooley Station Village Center area to allow users to flow through to the different uses. So we have asked them to put buildings as close to the property lines as possible and to use them as the walls and fences and limit them to in-between the buildings. So I do have a wall plan that is a little bit outdated, because the site plan has been updated from the first review. So we have two main entrance gates that will lead into the north area, has the casita buildings. They're kind of like duplexes with two car garages, and they are forming along the north and the west. This paseo area is part of that pedestrian corridor, kind of an urban trail in the Cooley Station area that starts up at Williamsfield Road and is going down through Verde at Cooley Station, through the apartment projects, and will continue down this way and have access to the future commuter rail that will really promote having an additional pedestrian and bicycle access that's not located on the roadways. And then for Somerton Boulevard, they have the main building, which will be a three-story building with some amenities internally to the site. Will be fronting along Somerton, and the units on the first floor will also have access to the sidewalk along Somerton. And the additional, the third building type is a villa building. This will be a two-story kind of ancillary building to the main building, but will have multiple apartment units within, and this will be fronting along Recker Road. There are three points of access into this building from Recker Road. So we are promoting, again, just as many points of access for pedestrians to move through the site and out to the other users and around up to the pedestrian corridor. This landscape plan is a little bit outdated, so this was a previous layout that they had. So I just wanted to point out on here the main points of access that we wanted to focus on. So this will really be a major connection point to the north that will lead these users to the amenities of the Verde at Cooley Station development that has a lot of restaurants and services. They also have an additional pedestrian access along the western side of the trail. And then we are requesting that they provide a pedestrian node in this area just so that we note that this is a main point of access to get to the commuter rail site in the future. And then they also have an additional access point at the hard corner of Recker and Somerton Boulevard. And then just a close screenshot of the amenities areas. They are having, 45% of the site is landscaped, which is exceeding the 40% requirement for the multifamily zoning district, multifamily medium. So they have a couple of different amenities throughout. They have pickleball courts and yoga, and also a community garden, and also a stage. So they're really promoting kind of community interaction within the active adult community. And then as I noted, this was the wall plan. This will be updated due to the site plan being updated. But again, we are trying to have limited wall use throughout the site just because of the location in the Cooley Station area. And we're also trying to enforce that they be low walls. So typically walls are six to eight feet in multifamily, but we do not have a requirement on this, because it, on this site, because it was part of a development plan that we don't have requirements for walls, for wall height. So we are asking that they lower these walls. They're currently shown at six feet. For colors and materials, it's pretty consistent with the Cooley Station area. They are using stucco and brick, and this brick is similar to the Fuego red brick. So any walls that are used in the development plan do have to follow that Fuego red brick that is common to the Cooley Station area. But this one is kind of like a friend of Fuego, as we keep saying, but it's very similar, and they'll be using that as well as the hardy plank siding. And then I'll go through, the applicant has updated their elevation since first review. So these are the newer versions, and these are really just focusing on what you can see from the right-of-way. So we don't have a full set of elevations, but I wanted you guys to get input on the most updated elevation. So this is the main building that you'll see from Somerton Boulevard along the right-of-way, and it's three stories, and we are just seeking input on their use of the different colors and materials and how they interact with each other, and they are also proposing some metal roofing, kind of pulling into that agrarian theme. So this site is kind of focusing on meeting contemporary with agrarian due to the product types that they're using, trying to capture that neo-traditional feel, while also noting that this is getting further into the higher-density area of the Cooley Center. And then this is the entrance into the clubhouse building. The layout is kind of angled, so it's a little hard to see on this elevation, but there is a port of cachet at the entrance of the building that cars will drive under, and then they are using that metal roof again. These are the casita buildings. They are paying some homage to the neo-traditional character that you'll see throughout the residential developments that have been completed throughout Cooley Station and the Fulton Homes sites that are being built directly to the east. So these are pretty much integrated into the feel and character of the area, and these will, some of these will be seen along the right-of-way. So this will be the side elevation, and this is what will also be seen along the right-of-way. And then this here is the villas building along Recker Road. So the layout is going to have a hallway, so they are using a lot of windows to kind of bring more of a transparency that we've been seeking in the Cooley Station area, and they are using the brick and having that carry up to the second floor, as well as having a roof style that's bearing from parapet to a gabled roof. And we also have some garages that will be internal to the site. So these will be in front of the villas, as well as along the casita area. So if you have any input on these garages as well. And they also have the floor plans, but to save some time, mostly just seeking your input on the elevations and the colors and materials and then how these three buildings are all interacting together, building types. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions or comments for Sydney? Or am I on the right case? I'm sorry, Stephanie.
It's okay.
Anyone?
Well, no worries. I called her Ashley earlier too. So poor Stephanie tonight. I can tell you, I think the colors look great. I think the architecture looks great. I have no, no feedback that would alter where they're headed. I think it's great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I can.
Commissioner Simon, I would agree. I think that they're doing a great job and I like the looking feel of it.
Okay. So I think the consensus is everybody likes the project.
Yeah. And this is Commissioner Munt. I don't know if I should speak since I was tardy due to technical difficulties, but I'm officially here and I, I like this. I think they did a good job and I like those textures on the top. So hello, everyone.
Hello. Okay. So Stephanie, it looks like you're good to go with us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move along to discussion of regular meeting agenda. So we have two items on consent. I'm sorry. One, two, three, four items on consent, two items on non-consent. Are we keeping the agenda the way it is? Are we pulling anything off or adding anything to consent? No. Okay. All right. So at this time, we'll adjourn the study session. Let's take a five minute break. We'll reconvene at six twenty-five to start the public hearing. Okay, we're all ready? Good. Okay, thank you. We'll call it a order. The Town of Gilbert, regular planning commission, regular meeting. The first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
United States, America, Republic, which stands nation.
Okay, thank you. For all the planning commission members, I'm just going to remind you, if you're not speaking, if you could please keep your mics on mute. Next item will be roll call.
Commissioner Cavaney?
Here.
Commissioner Munt?
Here.
Commissioner Simon?
Here.
Commissioner Alabrande?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Vice Chairman Bloomfield?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item will be item six, approval of agenda during the study session. I was discussed that we were making no men, no edits to the agenda. I will see it as, as it currently is. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as it's written.
Motion for approval. Whoever gives the second and this will go forward. If you could please state your name and then give your motion.
Yeah. Noah Munt, Commissioner Munt, the second.
Commissioner Munt for the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no. The agenda is approved. Next, we'll go to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters with the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody in the public that wish to like to wish to address the commission at this time?
Chairman, I will open up the phone lines. It is opening up for all attendees. So if you wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please state your name. I'm unmuting it now.
Sean Mark.
I did hear the name Sean Mark and Rick. Is that correct? Sean, Mark and Rick? I heard Sean, Mark and Rick. Is that correct? Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Okay, it doesn't sound like it. We'll move along. Item eight is report, report from council liaison on current events. The last time this person was with us, he was a planning commission member. Now he joins us as a council member. So Councilman September, I want to congratulate you on the appointment. Well deserved and I will hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners. I am absolutely delighted to be working with you again. I missed all you guys for the time I haven't seen you. And I'm, I'm just so delighted that I've been appointed to be the liaison to planning commission. This is really where my heart is, where I, where I kind of started working and serving here with Gilbert with you guys. And it's just really good to be back here. So my updates tonight, my events report will be brief. I'm pacing myself. So this week, we, the council appointed the seventh member to council, Young Kaprowski. And the other update is that if you, anybody, I want to remind everybody, including everybody listening, if you need updates for COVID nineteen here in Gilbert, that you can text the word Gilbert to three one, three one, three one. Very much.
All right. Thank you for that. Move along to the public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests that the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The items will be voting on will be item nine, DR nineteen dash one four three, The Bungalows on Ash. Item ten, DR nineteen dash one five two, The Bungalows on Ray. Item eleven, DR nineteen dash one nine four, Acacia Office. Item twelve, UP twenty dash zero four, Verizon Folk Cosmo Dog. Is anybody on the commission need to declare any conflicts with the agenda written? Not hearing any. I will open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Items number nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
Thank you. It's very second.
David Cavaney, second.
David Cavaney with a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no. The consent agenda is approved. Move along to public hearing, non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at a individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. The first item we will hear is item thirteen, DR nineteen dash two zero two, Sandman Elliott Industrial Building. I'll open the public hearing to Josh.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioners, DR nineteen two oh two is the Sandman Elliott Industrial Building, located just west of McQueen Road on Elliott and just directly west of the Gilbert Spectrum area. This is part of that, that tech center that's been there for quite a long time. In fact, this was one of the, the first parcels that was in the, the initial rezone from agricultural to light industrial, but has since remained undeveloped. It's a one and a half acre site, just located right on the corner of Elliott and Willem, William Dillard Drive. The applicant's proposing a, an approximate twelve thousand square foot office slash warehouse facility. Quite simple. Just for the elevations, I'll just do a quick run through. The applicant did a, in staff's opinion, a very good job for such a small building. Just with the use of materials and, and just the style. It's a very modern style. Staff really was pleased with the work that the applicant made on this project. As you can see, there's about five or six different materials of multiple different colors for the building itself. Staff really doesn't have, actually staff has no issues with the, with the proposed site or the plan. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any for you, but I really don't have any other information for the, the commission at this time. So if you have any other questions, we, we do recommend approval of DR nineteen two oh two, the Sandman Elliott Industrial Building. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Any questions or comments for Josh? Or staff?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Simon.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simon.
I just, I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say that I actually like that we're finally getting something for this corner. And fully in support of the design as it sits.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any. Is the applicant with us? And if so, do they wish to address the commission?
The applicant, Commissioner Anderson, the applicant is listening. He wasn't able to connect to the, the meeting, but he doesn't have anything that he wishes to add to the, the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman, Chairman Dave Cavaney. I do have one quick question, if I may add something.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cavaney.
So I just, I noticed on the northwest corner, what looks like some kind of monument signage. Or is that just a screen wall? It's on an angle. You know anything about that, Josh, and what that will be?
Commissioner Cavaney, I don't know what that is, but it is existing at the, at the moment. That's not something the applicant's adding. That's part of the, the existing offsite infrastructure.
Okay. Are there any perimeter walls at all? Or I see the, what looks like a trash enclosure or some kind of maybe even a propane enclosure. It's hard to tell on the southeast corner, but is there any other perimeter barrier?
Commissioner Cavaney, there is, there's parking screen walls on the, on the north end, right south of the, the, the trees. There is also the, on the east side, east of the building, that's an enclosed service yard. Those are enclosed with gates and eight foot walls.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Yeah, no other questions. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wish to address this project?
One moment, Chairman. I will unmute the public and. One moment, Chairman. I will unmute the public and see if there's anybody that wishes to speak. If anybody wishes to speak, state your name. I do not hear anybody.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to the commission. Is there any further discussion?
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Alabrande, I had a question on the drawing Josh talks about office storage slash laboratory. Do you have any indication of what type of uses might be, or that's just a generic term?
Commissioner Alabrande, Chairman Anderson, it's actually, they do materials testings for, not 100% exactly what it is for. I know they do some materials testing for the town in terms of the quality of materials we use for our streets, stuff like that. So I mean, we're talking about small little samples that they come down and test for whatever they tested for. I'll be honest, I'm not 100% sure, but that's typically what this, the applicant does.
That's fine. We're not worried about industrial gases. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, Chairman. This is Dave Cavaney. I move to approve the findings of fact and approve DR 19-202, Sandman Elliott Industrial Building as presented.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Commissioner Alabrande.
Commissioner Alabrande with a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no. Motion is approved unanimous. Thank you, Josh. Move along to item 14, S19-08, Mercy Val Vista Center, Keith.
Yeah, Commissioner, Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, good evening. I'm going to turn my screen here. If I can find it. Here we go. All right, can you guys see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So this project is for a preliminary plat for Mercy Val Vista Center, which is located at the southeast corner of Val Vista Drive and Mercy Road. Actually, right across the street from the Gilbert Mercy Hospital. And just to the east, or the west, sorry, of the Ironwood Cancer Center and another building that's under construction. So it's 8.97 acres, and there's a total of five proposed lots that the applicant is requesting for approval. And they have about, landscaping is about 25.7%. And if you'll recall, and if you recall, this project site came before you in the month of March for a general plan amendment and a PAD rezone, which you recommended unanimous approval for. So you've kind of seen this plan a little bit already. So here's the preliminary plat. Five total lots. And as far as the layout is concerned and the site design is concerned, there's two entrances off of Mercy Road. The easternmost entrance aligns with the entrance from the hospital across the street. And then you have, I would, what I would consider as the main entrance into the entire development is off of Val Vista Drive. And then you have two, sorry, three entrances along the southern boundary of the property. And one or two of those drives, I think one of them, the further westernmost drive, oh, actually two of them, match up with two drive entrances that will be built for the commercial development to the south. So there it is. There's the preliminary plat and all the lots. And as of right now, I believe there's about 90,000 square feet of building space or so. So we'll see if it sticks here in the future, so. And as far as the landscape and open space plan is concerned, there is, right, and as of right now, there is landscaping along the perimeter of the development site. And if you recall, as part of the PAD zoning, the developer asked for zero landscape setbacks along Mercy and a 10-foot landscape setback along the eastern boundary of the site. But they have still, even despite those landscape setbacks that were reduced by the council and approved by the council that way, they still have what we feel is a sufficient amount of landscaping. And like I said earlier, there's 27% landscaping on the site. And all the landscaping on the interior of the development will be, you'll see all that once the design review case has come before you, when each individual lot is developed. Here's the preliminary grading and drainage plan. Not much really to talk about here. Most of the retention on the property is going to be underground in the basins you see in those little checkered type linear areas underneath the parking area, parking area and drive aisles with a little bit along the perimeter. With this preliminary plat, the applicant is also getting the approval of a master site plan, which mimics obviously pretty much the, just a little bit more detailed than the preliminary plat. Shows all the parking stall locations and other types of details that you don't see on the preliminary plat, like drive-through lanes and things like that. The applicant wanted to do this master site plan, and we asked them to do it as well so that we could see how, if the lots are large enough to accommodate development and see how everything fits together and see how everything, all the lots will work together. So this master site plan is something that we are approving with this request or that is requested for your approval today as well. That concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that you, as a planning commission, approve this preliminary plat for Mercy Val Vista Center. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them.
All right, Keith. Thank you, Keith. Any questions or comments for Keith or staff?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. I like this project. I've always liked this project, and I think the pre-plat works well. They've shown here, even though it may be a bit misleading, I mean, I look at that in the landscape plan, and I say, there is not nearly enough to screen around those buildings, but that's not what it's intended to do. It's just for the master site plan and pre-plat. I think it looks great. I think they've accommodated and they've met all of the requirements of the general plan and zoning. I like it, and I look forward to seeing what the people bring in who buy all of these parcels and look forward to that development.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Not hearing any. We'll see, is the applicant here, and do they wish to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is Reece Anderson. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
I don't have anything else to add. I want to thank staff and Vice Chair Bloomfield for their comments and urge your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the commission have any questions for the applicant? I am not hearing any. We'll move along and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the commission.
I am unmuting the public, so please state your name if you would like to speak. Does anybody wish to speak? I did not hear anybody.
Okay, thank you. So I guess at this time, we'll close the public hearing, bring the discussion back to the commission. Is there any discussion on this item?
This is Dave Cavaney. I'll fill my comments. And so I think the applicant's done a good job of addressing the previous concerns. I think overall, it lays out very nicely. I do, I would have initially commented that I think the landscaping strip on the east boundary is a little thin, but staff has suggested that they're comfortable with it, so I am. I think that'll be fine. I do appreciate that all of the connection points do align with neighboring inlets. And I recognize that many things would be right in, right out only, which should be fine. And I think there are plenty of access points. So as far as a plat layout, I think this is great.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve item 14, Mercy Val Vista Center.
Motion by Vice Chair Bloomfield for approval. Is there a second?
Simon, second.
Commissioner Simon with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Keith. Let's move along to admin items. We'll go to item 15, Planning Commission Minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of April 1, 2020. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Certainly. Chairman, I move to approve the meeting minutes.
Motion for approval is there a second?
Cavaney, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Minutes are approved. Communications, report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. I don't have anything to report. There's not anybody else on the commission. Not hearing any. Let's move along to report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody for adapting to this WebEx format. I think that we went well this evening. Unfortunately, we had one mishap when the Wi-Fi dropped. But other than that, it's running smoothly, and I appreciate everybody's patience and your willingness to try the WebEx meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, definitely a great job tonight. I mean, last month was good for the first run, but I think you guys got all the kinks worked out this time around. Should we anticipate doing this again next month, do you think?
There is a good chance that we will continue with this next month.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. So with that, if no one objects, we will adjourn and reconvene in front of our monitors again next month. Thank you. Adjourned.
Brian, see you, everybody.
Thank you.
Great to see you.